Let us pray. Father God, thank you for letting us gather here on this beautiful evening. Let us be kind to each other in our worst thoughts and deeds. Let all our actions be pleasing to you. In your name I pray, amen.
Good evening, everyone. All of our wonderful guests, thank you for being here. And I'll start with Ms. Beckel.
Here.
Ms. Cookenbaum.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Boone.
Here.
And Mr. Turpin.
Here.
All right, great. Everyone is here, in inverted.
Next we have the approval of the...
I believe number seven is... Do you think they're number six?
No.
So we have the election and the police number seven.
Yes.
Now I'm moved that we moved the agenda for the public hearing meeting for June 24th, 2024. We've got police number seven.
Second. All right, on the motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of number seven, Ms. Cookenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Beckel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. Turpin?
Yes.
All right.
It is the intent that all persons attending the meeting with the board, guards, handicapped individuals shall have an opportunity to participate. If any person present requires any special assistance, please let the board know in order to arrange it as soon as they can. We've got a sign up sheet. If you want to speak, sign up. If the name's not on it, then we'll get it out and speak. This is a one way conversation. We're here to listen to y'all's opinions and what they... When you come to the mic, state your name, address, your firm, make comments, or...
All right, so the chairman has asked that I maybe give some brief comments before you all come up and make public comments to give a little additional background about where we are in the budget process and kind of what is before the board at this point. As you all know, tonight is the budget public hearing, and so this is on the budget side. As you might know, some of you that were here from some of the earlier meetings, at earlier meetings, there was a discussion first. I did a presentation, and so maybe I'll go back and talk a little bit about our process. So in the winter, Kim and I, my deputy CFO, asked the departments for their input on their budgets, and then we worked with them on what those proposals might be. And we came to the board with a PowerPoint I presented about what our recommendation would be from the staff, from county administration. And some of that took some of the department requests and accepted them, and some others, we made some other adjustments. I will tell you that for the most part, the department heads followed the request of the board and pretty much kept their request, again, for the most part, very close to what they were the previous year. If you go back and see any of those documents, some of the places where you might see some variance that might seem unexplained is, at the time those were submitted, the General Assembly was talking about doing a three percent across the board but increase for all employees that are funded through the Commonwealth. And so several of those department heads included that anticipating the General Assembly would do that. And so they weren't asking for anything other than what they thought was likely to happen. So it wasn't across the board. All these department heads decided their folks needed a big raise, so wanted to clarify that. And so we put together what we presented to the board, and you all might recall, if you paid attention to that meeting and the subsequent meetings, there's also been a question, a kind of a continuing question, although we have a little bit more information about what is going to be the budget situation for the public schools in Floyd County. We, like several other counties that are somewhat like us, particularly ones that are, say, near a large lake or along a parkway, had some changes that changed the formula to drive how much money goes to the public school system. So the initial estimate from the public schools after they did their first round of cuts, which included eliminating 11 positions, mostly through retirements and attrition and those kind of things, but still 11 positions and some other cuts, that they were still going to be about $988,000 short. And so at that time, we had discussion then about what the tax rate should be. And so the recommendation from myself was a two percent real estate tax increase with one cent of that committed to emergency, fire, rescue, paid EMS, so that whole category of effort, because that is so important here. And then there would also be an additional one cent that potentially would be spent on several things, but potentially the school system. My understanding now is that the schools have gotten good news, but we don't know how good it is yet, I think is kind of the last communication I got from Dr. Krueger. So as they're working through that, we'll bring that information back to the board. But what you have, what the public has before you is what they have decided or for their proposed budget. So tonight, they're looking for your opinions about what they have proposed, and again, they've made some changes from what I recommended based on what's important to them and whatever new information we have. So I'm happy to talk about any of those things for any of you all that are looking for that more detailed information. Our budget document right now is 123 pages. So I only have, we only have a couple of paper copies here, but it is on the website, and so you should be able to get to that. And there is also a copy of the ad that was run in the Roanoke Times, two times as required. And that includes the highlights of the budget and then also, of course, announce tonight's public hearing. And so where we are in the process now, and if you'd like, Mr. Chair, I'll give a couple of highlights about things that have changed, but really, the purpose tonight is for the board to hear public comments, and then the law requires that they wait another seven days, and then at that time, they would be able to pass a budget. And then they have to do it by, to close the business June 30th. So that's kind of in there. It'd be easier for all of us if they were able to do it sooner, but we still have a lot of things kind of floating in the air, particularly exactly how much is going to be available to the school system and what their challenge is going to be. And you'll see that reflected in some of the things in the budget. So if I'm not, Mr. Chair, I'll just like go through some high level things. I wasn't really planning to go to 123 pages, but...
Just to have...
Some of the highlights. And most of those highlights would be pretty much no change from what was recommended in the first place for many things. So for instance, on the Board of Supervisors, which is page three at the very beginning, it shows that the amount there is $105,000. And so that is potentially reflected. The Board of Supervisors salary can't change that. So the only thing that changes there on that page has to do with their travel that they have to do to go to Virginia Association of Counties meetings. We have a couple folks that serve on the board. And in addition to that, the cost related to those who take health insurance. So that'll be the story with many of these departments, just to keep going. In the Office of the County Administrator, we have some positions that have been collapsed when you see them in the detail. So for instance, I assure you, I do not make $270,000. That would be great, but you all would hate it, and so that wouldn't be good. So that is not it. It actually combined several salaries there. So one of the changes has been is we have changed a little bit about the allocation of an additional position that was funded last year that would serve partially to assist with the financial work and then also help support the grant side of our EBA. And so that is a change in here. And there's also a little bit of change to our IT office, and maybe you might remember years ago, we had an outside vendor, and now we have Danny. And we find Danny amazing, and so it reflects having Danny and not an outside vendor. And I won't go into necessarily in this level of detail on everything, we just wanted to give you all a sense. The Commissioner of Revenues budget is very close to what it was before. Again, just those kind of potential changes. And I will say, in terms of salary, the board has had some discussion about small increases for the staff, which would be about 2.1%, and that's what's reflected in this proposed budget. So that's one of the highlights. And if necessary, if you need, you all want to reach out to me, I can explain to you how we got to 2.1%, which is a very unusual number. It also includes the funds to pay the electoral board. This is one that there has been a lot of conversation about, so the chairman thought I should highlight that a little bit. There has been a request to do some restructuring of the finances, to the Electoral Board and the Registrar's Office, and to potentially increase the compensation, especially for some of the folks that are coworkers, and also make some changes to their internal staffing and their IT staffing. Our recommendation was to take some of those, and the board has generally agreed with that, although they didn't move one of those lines down, about $10,000. But I'm just leaving it at that. The Treasurer's Office also remains pretty much the same, very consistent. The next one is the Registrar's Office, which I just mentioned. Most of the rest of them, Circuit Court. County Attorney, that's Mr. Durbin. Of course, we continue to use him. The next kind of larger change is there were some staff changes, if you're on a paper copy, page 42, related to the Commonwealth Attorney. Again, that's collapsing a couple of positions together. We also added a line item there. The board added the line item and put $5,000, and it related to the seizure of animals. So that is not the one off kind of seizure of animals, you know, the one that somebody finds running around, doesn't have an owner, has been abandoned. But if there is a massive seizure of animals, say like a puppy mill or something like that, then there is a line item here particularly for that, because ultimately, the call about should those animals be seized and how they should be treated once seized falls to the Commonwealth Attorney. So I wanted to put that in his budget. The Sheriff's Budget, everyone always asks about that. Sheriff Craig's really only increased, other than those kind of across the board things from related to the state, is some replacements for some of the parts of his tasers, and that was it. So appreciate that. So his budget comes in about $2.4 million. Forestry is flat. Sheriff's courtroom, pretty much flat. Building inspections is actually pretty flat. Animal control, similar. EMS has been changed to include starting to set aside some funding for a third ambulance, funding a third ambulance in the county, because we're starting to have more and more activity. General Properties has actually decreased, and we've done some movement. So if you're trying to compare things, we're trying to get all the things that are related to capital investment in one place as opposed to kind of scattered around the budget over the years. So that's what those changes are. Local Health Department required, and is what they require. Mental Health Services, similar. There was actually an error there. So it looks like it went down about half as much, but really, that was a type of graphical error on our part. Agency on Aging, the same. Parks and Recreation does show an increase, and is not as much increase as the department had requested, but it does include increases related to hopefully doing a little bit more work on some of the fields and also taking over the parade and the 14th July and doing more senior events. Just trying to see if there's any more kind of larger things, economic development. As you look at that, that'll be kind of all over the map a little bit too, because Ladina generates a lot of big grants, and so those show up in there. So if you have questions, if you know about that. Budget stabilization right now is at, let's see, $649,000, and contingency is $411,000, but some of that contingency and budget stabilization is earmarked for potential use for the schools of need. With that, and going through here, recycling is actually less expensive because you are recycling more and reselling more. I think that's the list of the ones that are significant changes. This is all print, so... Oh, 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 thank you. And Kim was reminding, the last thing that would be confusing to highlight if you're looking at paper copies is it looks like there's a huge increase in E911 of $4 million. But it's not a massive increase of $4 million. That is the $4 million that we have taken out as loans to pay for the new radio system. And so we are in the process of trying to secure sites for the new towers for that. So if any of you have really doll in and want to sell us about an acre to put a big tower on, it will be a skinny tower. It's just a stick. It's not to put cell phones on or anything like that. It just is for 80 pounds worth of emergency radio equipment, and so we'll need to put some of those up, and then we'll be expending those funds. But it's not just a massive move of $4 million into that fund outside of that. So I think with that, Mr. Chairman, unless you think there's something else, I think that's most of the highlights about things that have changed. So, thank you. And if you'd like, now I'll go to the, unless there's something else. Okay. I'll go to the list, and I have several people that have signed up to speak. If for some reason you've changed your mind and you don't want to anymore, just wave me past, and we'll keep going. But, Mr. Chairman, I advise folks, if they weren't sure, go ahead and put their name on the list, so they wouldn't get scared.
Do you have the list?
I wanted to sign up, sorry. I...
And if you want, Mr. David Whittaker is first, followed by Mr. Paul Kitchen while these ladies are signing up. And Mr. Whittaker, you might want to wait just a moment, but I wanted you to have the opportunity to get up, so thank you. So as Mr. Whittaker knows, because he's done this with us many times, but if we would ask if you would tell the board your name and which district that you represent?
David Whittaker from the Cortez District. My question has to do with the monies that you were able to find for donations to various organizations. You say you don't have enough money to make ends meet, so you have to raise taxes. Well, yet, you managed to find about $40,000, as I mentioned, from various groups. And if you count the $40,000 for tourism development, that makes about $80,000. My question is, shouldn't the businesses who profit from tourism fund tourism development? Charity is not forced, and it comes from the heart of love. Government charity is not love. How can you read our hearts and decide for us when it comes to giving to various organizations? While some nonprofits are worthy of donations and many depend on individuals giving, government tax money should not be handed out against the express will of the people. Remember that you serve at our pleasure, and you don't spend our money without our permission. The Good Samaritan in the 10th chapter of St. Luke was not a government agent and not a social worker. He gave from his heart and out of his own pocket when he saw a need. Thanks for your time, kitchen.
Next, Mr. Chairman, on the list is Mr. Paul Kitchen from Little River District.
Good evening. I am Paul Kitchen. I am the chairman of the Floyd County Board of Elections. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I've come before you several times. I have met with the county administrator and her deputy multiple times. All of this to provide justification for the Floyd County Office of Elections and Electoral Board budget request for FY '24. We've asked for adjustments. We ask that the general registrar's budget be upped by $10,000 from the current planned amount of $20,000 to cover the cost of part-time employees, the election equipment technicians, and IT support staff that you mandated by forcing us to have a separate computer network that our county IT professional cannot fully support. We also ask that you adjust the Electoral Board budget for officers of election. We must have an additional $7,000 to meet the state law mandated obligation to deploy appropriate numbers of officers to effectively run elections. This is not a pay raise. This is paying at exactly the same level as previous years, just deploying the correct number of people during the upcoming June election on June 18th and the presidential election on November the 5th. We also identified $60,000 of income that can be added to the shared expense account for the county. Monies that come from the State Department of Elections in the form of reimbursements for approved election expenses, the general registrar's salary, and the Electoral Board members' compensation. This year, our request that will be paid is in excess of $66,000, and it will be paid this June. You were told that the state did not pay its bills from the prior years. Therefore, the county administration set up the income level for this current, this coming budget cycle, the only $25,000. The state did pay its bill of $66,084 back on June the 12th of 2023. And here's the evidence directly from the county Treasurer's Office, right from your own ledgers, showing the amount paid. Therefore, this objection is invalid, and the reimbursement of the state should be set to the $85,000 that we have recommended. There is no valid reason not to do so. With this objection removed, and by adding to the $25,000 another 60 to get to 85, you add $60,000 to the income on the positive side of the ledger, more money in the bank. So please, step up, give us the $17,000 that we're asking for, for the Office of Elections and the Electoral Board. The net effect is you're going to be $43,000 to the good. That's $43,000 back to the bottom line. So please, do the right thing for the citizens of Floyd County. Support the Floyd County Office of Elections and the Electoral Board, and make sure that we can run safe, secure, effective, and accurate elections. Thank you.
I ask you all to hold your applause, because we can't hear what she's saying. Hold it to the end, if you would.
Mr. Best, you're next. Mr. Daniel Miss, do you love this token?
Love this token. First of all, I'd like to thank what just said there. I think we need to be vigilant and look for other cases of this. For the past two weeks, I have listened to your board time for, whatever you call it, for budgets. And what I could hear, which now the audio wasn't that great, I had wrote down some bullet points of things I thought could be improved. First one is, why is the rescue insurance reimbursement not put right, coming home right back into the rescue squad, though? I think it goes to the gentleman. The second thing I got is adjust the sales occupancy tax where the collection discount is reduced. By that, I mean, you collect 6 cents on a dollar, you keep some of that. They keep less if we're in a dire straits of taxes up here. The next bullet I got is implement a new short-term occupancy board, a similar short-term occupancy board, and it's similar to what Franklin County has. Treat the 130 Airbnbs as true businesses. This event has taken most of the starter housing off the market for our kids that live in this town. At least two of you on the board should have known about this, and I think one of you probably did. Why did you not be proactive and do something to keep this one running well? The next thing I have is a bullet is quit giving our tax dollars to nonprofit organizations through administration fees, exceed 20% of their gross income. And that should go as well to getting grants, because it's all tax money. The next thing I have is fix Florida first. No more boondoggles for county staff. We don't need to go to South Dakota or the IDMA. We need to stay here in the county and get jobs here in the county for our residents, not tourism, tourism, part-time seasonal jobs. Supervisors, get involved. Don't appoint county staff as an officer to approve permits. It's one thing. Politically savvy move, but not the right thing to do. We elected the supervisors to direct the county, not the other way around. We shouldn't be giving all the power to supervisors to non-elected officials. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Becky Howell from Berksport is next.
Good evening, Becky Howell, Berksport. So I've already commented to you all several things, but primarily, you have limited financial responsibilities. Government is established to protect our God-given rights and then basically provide for our safety, and I would encourage you to limit your spending to that. In 2020, we had a real estate tax levy of 60 cents, and you've approved the rate of 67 now. Personal property tax in 2020 is $2.95, and you've increased it to 2021. And I would like to remind you again that when you give raises to employees, even though they're modest, that gives them more spendable income. When you raise the tax levy, that gives us less spendable income. So you've already set the levy. It would be inconvenient for you to take that back, and you've also caused an additional five, $6,000 expense to the county, and have to send those tax tickets out again. But I would encourage you to take that money that you've already approved and put it into the budget stabilization fund and into the contingency fund, rather than spending it on things you're not required to spend it on, and then use it in future years for those things that you are required to spend it on. Thank you very much.
Next is Ms. Kamala Bowers from Little River.
Yes, Kamala from Little River, as she said. I'm here because I want to just support the work that... She said, I'm here because I want to just support the work that is done by you folks. I actually think we are going to do a tax rate increase. I know that seems crazy because I pay a lot of taxes here. But I think when I look around to the adjoining communities, I think our tax rate's pretty low. And I am in support of us having the things we need. I want to say that as a hospitality business, I do pay a lot of taxes. And I also support the arts and culture of our region, which is so unique and why people come here. When people come here, visit the Floyd Center for the Arts, the Junebug Center, or numerous other places, they sometimes stay and sometimes they bring their businesses. So it really does assist us in growing Floyd in a kind of holistic way. I personally have several businesses here and only one of them is hospitality related. So we do manufacturing and healthcare as well. So anyway, I like that Floyd is an inclusive community. And I hope that you appreciate that as much as I do. I want to also say, I really appreciate the work that goes on in the county government as far as getting us federal tax dollars through grants. That is just smart. Those grants are going somewhere. They might as well come to Floyd. And the more aggressive we are about getting that money here, and we're pretty aggressive about it already, better off we are. Sometimes those grants require matching funds. So it's leveraging a little bit of money to get a lot more money. In Floyd County, some people don't know this. I have a lot of property in town and around town. And I'm aware that our public service authority is in desperate need of upgrades. Some of that's been happening, but it's just a lot. And it's happening across the country at the same time. A lot of this stuff was built at the same time. And I just saw a video of Jeff Jackson, I think his name is. He's a congressman next door in North Carolina who was able to get an earmark for a PSA in a small town in North Carolina. So I will share that video with anybody who wants to see it. But I want to suggest that we actually ask Morgan Griffin and Tim Kane to support us in upgrading our PSA system because with some federal money, there was money in the infrastructure bill. And the fact is, is that the sooner we get up on that list, the better off we're going to be. And it is happening. When people were asking for it, it happened. And he made a video, so I will share it with anybody who wants to see it. And I think that's all. Thank you for all your hard work.
Next is Carrie Nicholas, I believe, in Berksport.
My name is Carrie. I'm from Berksport. I don't know much about the budget process or any of that type of stuff. I kind of try to stay away from government as much as I can. So I'm here to learn about the budget process. And I just wanted to express some of the ideas that I have as far as just being a citizen of Floyd County. If I understand things properly, the state of Virginia cut back on some funding because property values in Floyd fell up. So they reduced the monthly that they give to the school system. I don't, I don't know. I've been a carpenter my whole life, other than a stint in the army and a paramedic for 10 years. I can't tell you, I can't think of how rising property values help anybody. If you have to replace a home that you rent, how does it help? It doesn't make us any wealthier. Young people are getting increasingly priced out of the market. Young families can't move up from that starter home because interest rates are prohibitive now. So I don't see how that increases the wealth of us at all. I don't understand how the state figures all this stuff, but the property value thing bothers me. The price of everything that the people need to live is going up. Food, gas, not to mention homeowners insurance, medical costs, building materials, the list goes on and on. So when the Board of Supervisors voted to raise our mortgage rate by two cents, we're also going to be facing increased property values, which is going to kick everything up higher on people that are already struggling to make ends meet. I like vital services. I was a paramedic for quite a while. Been Floyd County for about half my career. I want EMS. I want police. I want fire protection. Education is important. I do think that maybe we give too much of our budget to education in a county of 15,000 people with enrollment down from 1,900 to 1,600 or so in the last few years. I do think that sometimes the Board of Supervisors needs to say no to non-vital items. And closely monitor the cost of vital services. The easy way out is to raise taxes on people who are already struggling to make ends meet. I know this format is probably set up by somebody else. It seems almost dehumanizing that the people talk and we don't get a response. Richard McNamara, a good friend of mine, asked the board, how could you raise the mortgage rate without a public meeting? And he never got an answer. And he sent out two tax bills. So that costs money, right? I guess that's all I'm going to get to say.
Next is Renee Metcalf from Courthouse District.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and attention here. And I would like to talk a little bit about the taxes, the tax increases, and what is being spent on. You know Margaret Thatcher is, I think, the one who said it's easy to spend other people's money. And that's for sure true. The taxes is my money. Taxes is my money. Taxes is your money. It's our money. And once government has it in their hands, they seem to think that it's their money. But it's my money. It came from me originally. I would like to have some say-so on how it is spent. I am an art supporter. I love the arts. I love music. I'm a very artsy person myself. I support art. But I support it with my own money, out of my own pocket. I want money to be used for things that are not objectionable, such as drag queen shows is very morally objectionable. I don't want my money being used for such purposes. Goes against my religion. And I would not spend my own money for that. The tax money is my money. It was taken from me originally, and I have no direct control over that anymore. So I would like to see our money used wisely and not for objectionable activities. Thank you.
Ms. Laura, Little River. Thank you.
My name's Marley Eastler. I've been in the Little River District. And I'm not prepared with a lot of notes. So I'm not going to be speaking out of my head with a lot of numbers. What I'm here for is to speak about value in community. And it's interesting, we just dovetailed this last speaker and myself. I was raised in the Riddick Valley. I've lived in Floyd since, well, I've had my tenure since 1996. I've been spending time in this community since 1977. I have 14 years of experience as an art teacher. I've worked at Blue Mountain School. I've worked in the public school system. I've worked in the Riddick City School System. I've done a lot of artisan resins. And what I have seen, well, let me just, this is the history, but I'm here to emphasize the value of what we invest in as a community. And arts and culture is what I'm here to speak in favor of. I agree with safety and infrastructure and all of that. But I don't want, I don't want the board or community to dismiss the importance of how we, I'm not saying that you are, that we can look at our land pockets. We can look at the Junebug Center and the Floyd Center for the Arts as an investment in our future generations. I'm also a trauma-informed body worker, and I've worked with a lot of youth who have been through a lot of trauma. And the expression of art has been a healing process for them. And if we want to create, build safe communities, I believe we also need to provide alternative activities, not just sports in the high school, not what is very essential, I think, in our public school systems, but after school. When some of these kids might be going home to a dysfunctional family or to a violent environment, they have a safe place in the Floyd Center for the Arts, the Junebug Center, to learn music, to learn theater, to express themselves. I would like very much for you to consider, I don't know the numbers and what money's going where for the arts, but I do like to emphasize the importance of supporting our youth and creativity process. I remember my kids were young and they were looking for entertainment. And sadly, drinking, all the things, all that stuff was very, very shiny, right? And I know, we don't need to get into the whole parenting thing, but when I talked to one of my children, he said, well, there's nothing to do with it. Well, it's changing. And there are a lot of excellent programs at the Junebug Center. And there are a lot of excellent programs at the Floyd Center for Arts. I give my money. They have grants. It's never been enough to be able to support scholarships for kids who can't afford to have these programs and classes and all this stuff. However much we can throw in that direction, that's all I'd like to say. I could go on and on, but I think that's enough. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Jane Avery. Next I have Jane Avery from the Courthouse District.
The Lord has spoke a lot of what I was going to say. But I do want to bring up, and the reason I chose to wear this t-shirt was this is the sign of Buffalo Mountain. And I have to share that a few years ago, Jack Lawson, who many of you know, owned the hardware store. And it was his family who owned the land that then they turned into the park that became Buffalo Mountain. He used the word confession. He said, I have to confess to you that when you folks first moved here, we weren't sure what was going to happen. But the truth is, you saved the county. Because back then, it's been 45 years. Floyd was a dying rural county like many are in this area. And a lot of that had to do with, I mean, one of the first wave potter's that landed here and felt so at home because the old mountain culture, where they make their own fiddles, their own guitars, food, their own food for generations. And we were choosing that life. And so that mutual connection of honoring each other has been a very important part of Floyd. And I was part of a small group of us that had an idea of turning that old dead barn into an art center. Thank goodness, there's those of us with ideas and then there's those that know how to get the money and grants to make that happen. But that image of barn and art represents Floyd in so many ways because it's about the recognition. Art is not an elitist thing. It's not about fine art in a museum. It's about what's created inside all of us, including the farmers, including everyone that works with their hearts and their minds. And now learning too. My daughter, who was born here and had become an elementary school teacher up in Maine, she's had to learn therapy classes because the kids are going big back these days, as you can imagine, knowing that anytime someone would walk into a school and shoot them with a rifle. And what's happening is they're learning that more and more, the therapy is working with your hands, working with your hearts, working with your minds. So they're learning more and more that art is an important necessity. And so I'm here to just encourage you. And I remember when there was that concern about the matching grant for Junebug and the Art Center. They both need it. They need that money to keep going with the things they're doing, which are so important for the, a part of that evolution that Floyd has become. And saving the farms and saving the creative side of everyone. And I do want to share, now that I sell my pottery down in Roanoke and people find out I'm from Floyd, they say, oh, I love Floyd. And I ask them, so what about it? And they all say, to some degree, one person said, it's the feel of it. But they do mention things like that combination of farmers and artisans and, you know, the Art Center, the Junebug, the Country Store, everything. It's all a mixture that we need to keep working on. So I really trust that you all can find a way to keep it going economically. But as has been said, the challenges economically for everyone, but especially you young generation, training is so much more expensive. Most of, a lot of our kids are still paying off college debt, you know? It's crazy. So I want to encourage you to remember that aspect of Floyd that includes everyone in that mixture of us that has made Floyd a rest of it. Thank you.
Next on the list is Jack Wall from Little River.
Good evening. I'm Jack Wall from Little River District. I want to thank you for the work you do. It's one of the toughest jobs around to be a work with a manager of budget during these difficult times. And as a soul, I know how difficult it is to hire staff when costs are going up and competition around town is difficult. So you guys have a tough job. And I appreciate the work you do to get the balance that you need. The only suggestion I have is that I'd like some consideration. I'm concerned by climate change. And I've got a lot to try to provide more renewable energy resources. I would like to get the county to consider the schools to be entering into our purchase agreement. It is a way for our county to do something using the roof space that we have on all of our schools to put solar energy there. The way that counties in Virginia do that, there are about 30 counties, so last I checked, that have these situations. They have done that where they, you know, they've entered into an agreement basically with a bank and where they contracted to install solar energy. The panels are owned by the bank or the business entity for usually 20 years because it's a private entity to get the tax credit, you know, the basically 30% tax credit, which the county can't, obviously can't benefit from. But on average, that gives at least a 10% reduction in power bills for the school system. There's no guarantee because you do an actual assessment of the schools and how it impacts things. But you're always going to come out as a reduction in your power bills. And the other benefit is that it's showing a commitment to doing something, you are getting renewable energy and getting off fossil fuels. And we all have to do our part to make that happen or else we're going to be, our society is going to turn into a hardship. So I'd like that, you know, some consideration of those kind of things because it can be a win-win across the board and also give an example for our students that we're trying to do something about climate change. Thank you.
Laura E. Robbins?
Yes.
Thank you.
If any of you have a phone and anyone's got a picture or video, I'd super appreciate it. Good evening. I am Laura E. Robbins. She heard a pronouns. I reside in the Courthouse District. And I identify as a proud queer, neurodivergent, Appalachian, Pecastic, theistic wizard. Any of you who are curious about that, I'd be happy to talk to you about it afterwards. But first, I would like to invite everyone in this room who feels called to join me. in a true celebration of the stolen land that we all inhabit. Traditionally, the high plateau of Blue Ridge was stewarded by the Toodoosaponeye of the Monica peoples. I acknowledge that some of my ancestors were part of the colonization of these sacred grounds, these pristine abundant waters, and the homes of the original inhabitants of Turtle Island. I deeply regret the harm caused. I believe wholeheartedly that we need to give our indigenous friends their land back. I honor the earth, the water, the fire and the air that supports us, renews us, inspires us and gives us life. I was advised a long time ago to be very careful about challenging Judeo-Christian morality in a room of public governance. I tried hard to convince local leaders to oppose the Mountain Valley Pipeline. The moral argument is powerful. Why undermine any version of that which might incite good stewardship of our ecologies and economies? Why challenge belief systems when what we are ostensibly challenging are projects that harm our community and environment? Entering a public decision-making space where ethics are not based on what is ethical, but instead on what is moral, arguably morals leaned from a particularly judgmental, fundamentalist Christian perspective has been a challenge for me. Swearing allegiance to a flag that has become more and more problematic is not something I feel called to swear to, though I am currently avoiding swearing about it. Blind, doctrine-based faith and allegiance is not compatible with who I am. And I deserve to be who I am in the community that raised me.
You need to touch on this.
You're a part of me, right? No, I mean, you are a part of the community that raised me. Here's the thing. After ten years of organizing to protect and preserve Floyd County and the communities threatened by petrocolonization in this region, I would love to turn my attention to this vibrant, diverse community in a positive, supportive, realistic way. I want to oppose war, demand ceasefire, stand up for the lives of children being threatened overseas by weapons produced nearby like the ones of the Bradford Army and ammunition plant. I want us to establish protected wish trees all over the place, beginning with the ancient maple near Little Tree. I want an energy cooperative. I want to honor our living traditions. I want to discard any traditions that uphold the premise or practice of white supremacy, bigotry, xenophobia, transphobia, racism, and oppression. But we're obviously not there yet. We cannot even decide on how our limited budget will be allocated. So let's start here. We take care of us. Frankly, the nonprofit industrial complex is a quagmire. But in our community, how is Floyd actually being led? Is it by the five of you, the school board, the town council? Or is it also by exemplary leaders like the ones at Plenty, the Junebug Center, Spring House, local librarians, local inmates and fire services, et cetera?
Four minutes of that. If you have additional ones, you can reduce it.
Thank you for your time. And I claim my own religious practices in this room. Thank you.
Next is Katrina Graffley. It works for it. Sorry, hit me then. What's your name, Katrina?
Wow. Good evening.
What was your name?
I'm Katrina Graffley and I own Rock Shop here in Canada. I am also the head of Flower Power. I am some board of the partnership. I came in with all this stuff I was saying. Then I heard a couple of other things that were actually pretty good. But one thing I heard, they're great. They're kind, they're polite. They're seeking answers. So I couldn't get the new budget that went down. But I looked at the old budget and I saw you're consistent. You don't bounce around. You don't chirp up and down. You've not shown a lot of favoritism. The nonprofits are not getting giant amount of money. The nonprofits are not getting giant amount of money. But I think what people are forgetting, that's where the kids go and get pizza. That's where they have plays. That's an intermittent babysitter a lot of times. It's not a giant amount of money that's been allocated to the Junebug Center or Floyd Center for the Arts. But together with the other hundred fusions, it makes phenomenal things happen. If we come across the board evenly, not dock one or the other evenly, everybody benefits and nobody loses. If we lose programs at the Junebug Center or if we lose programs at the Center for the Arts, it's gonna affect the children most. Your whole families. Because that's where some kids have it. Some of them have to go home. So if we have to figure somewhere for forty-five hundred dollars for these kids, then maybe we should, we argue. If that's all they need to help the kids to kill. So everything else that I wanted to say that mean anything if we don't do these camps.
Marina? I'm struggling with reading your last name.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Lingli.
Yingli.
Yes, thank you. It says student, so you'll need to let these folks know where you live.
No, no. Okay.
It's a Mirage.
All right, all right, yeah. My apologies, I only have one eye, so.
Say your name in the district.
Okay, my name's Marina, I'm from Montgomery. And once again, for any wandering vision, I only have one eye, I completely blind. So I'm sure everyone's a little bit, you know, that it's gonna be a long meeting and I am no longer speaker, so I ask you to bear with me. I also wanted to touch on support for the Junebug Center and art and pleasure in the area from maybe a little bit of a different perspective that hasn't been touched on before this evening. In school, I am a sociology major. Very, very profitable. And I hope to become a librarian in order to, you know, support my community. And something that frequently comes up in both sociological studies and in librarian spaces is the importance of allowing, especially children, to be able to express themselves, explore their passions, explore their talents, and engage with the possibilities available to them in the world. All kinds of children from all kinds of backgrounds. And another thing that often comes up is the very, very quickly disappearing existence of third spaces. Third spaces are where you can go that is not worker school or home. And, you know, if I'm engaged in, I assume if you sold it for some of the older folks here, I imagine when you were a child, there were a lot of places you could go where you didn't have to spend too much money and you could go with your friends. And as you move into an increasingly digital, connected, yet separated world, a lot of those spaces are disappearing. And especially after COVID, you know, a lot of the after-school programs, art programs, and places where children who come from all kinds of backgrounds could find community are starting to evaporate. And when you look back on those memories of being able to build community with your peers and express yourself and find yourself, you know, I think those are really important things to foster as we decide when we're going to allocate these funds and what kind of world we want to create for, you know, which children and our future generations. And I can assume pretty easily that everybody in this room wants the absolute best for the kids coming up behind us. And as somebody who is disabled and going into the library profession, I can say all kinds of art have made a huge difference in my childhood and helped with many of the first experiences of growing up with a disability and feeling very alone in many times of my childhood, being able to go to these places that would provide art programs, go to the library, go to these community spaces and engage with culture that wasn't just about day-to-day survival or K-12 education. And so I ask you, if this blind woman can see the value in arts, I hope you can too. Thank you.
Kristen Best from Locust Grove.
Just so I don't have to worry about the microphone being blown up. I mean, I'm talking this time. Kristen Best, Locust Grove District. Really didn't have any prepared remarks, surprisingly. I usually do. I just wanted to talk mostly about the community service program part of the budget because I understand that the big dilemma was we either fund all of them or we don't fund any of them except for the jail and a couple of other things on there. And I just wanna bring a couple of things to your attention. So in the conversation about the Floyd Center for the Arts, actually, there was no conversation about the Center for the Arts. That was just approved and passed through with no comments from any of you. When you got down to the last one, to the Junebug Center, there was uncomfortable conversation about what decision to make. And I understand the thought of, you don't wanna be sued by anybody, so we either approve them all or we don't fund them all. I get that. But what I looked at when I saw this is I see inconsistency. Okay, so you left the 2250 for the Junebug Center and for the Floyd Center for the Arts, even though you had not approved the grant that they had asked for. Somehow, that amount that the grant would have approved made its way into the budget. I know how that happened. You go back and you watch the March 26 supervisor meeting and you can see that. But I'm not gonna go to that. I'm just gonna say, you look at things like that, the amounts were less than the same. But then you look here at the livestock line. And that's for the Floyd County Fair. And they had asked for four thousand. County administrator recommended fifteen hundred, but in the discussion, he took that down to five hundred dollars. Floyd County started as an agricultural community and still is largely an agricultural community. Agriculture is culture. If you wanna argue about preserving the culture in Floyd, agriculture is part of that. So you're taking away a thousand dollars from the Floyd County Fair that promotes what Floyd County was originally all about. Cows and chickens and farming and all of that. And then you did the same thing with the Blue Ridge Heritage Foundation. Took that from five thousand down to twenty-five hundred because they'd only planted a few chestnut trees and maybe really nothing had happened since then, since in the last few years. So I guess what I'm saying is, if you can reduce the budget for some of the things on here, then you need to reduce all of the things on here. Again, we just had a tax increase and it's gonna get worse next year. Unless you all just levy back to fifty-five cents, we're gonna have a sizable increase next year. These are the kind of things we're just asking you to really think about and look at and not just laugh and go, "Oh, you know, it's ten o'clock at night. We need to get out of here really fast." I get it, it's long meetings, a lot of time. I know, it takes a lot of time to watch those meetings. So I'm just asking, if you go back in and look at this, maybe, you know, if you feel like you have to fund everybody on here, make it fair. Reduce it for everybody so that you're not favoring one over another. Me personally, I don't think you should fund the Junebug or the Black Sea Bill. But I think you hear where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Next is L.A. Armistead from Courthouse.
Hello, I'm Armistead, Courthouse District. I didn't prepare any notes tonight. I would like to thank, I really would like to thank all of you for your service, but I really feel inclined to be the thank Jerry Booth and Linda DeVito because I have seen time and again, three of you exhibit explicit bias against my community. I'm a lesbian and I don't feel comfortable feeling attacked on a regular basis. As far as the grant, sometimes you have to look and do some discernment. You get, I was really upset when I heard this concept of there's no such thing as free money. Therefore, we're not gonna do any matching grants. And I see volunteers in this community putting forth their efforts, their labor for free to do things like the Humane Society, which saves this county money when it comes to the animal shelter. Plenty, which serves our citizens. And the arts, I really have a particular fundy for. And I don't know if you're aware, but right now, the arts is in the top two sectors of the fastest-growing economic sectors in our economy right now. And it really feeds our tourism industry. And I really am so sad that there continues to be this bias to the Junebug Center. They've done nothing wrong and they serve the children of this community and regardless of their income level. So I really hope, is it gonna take education, us getting together and talk to get through some of this bias and prejudice? And I also wanna remind you that I really believe in our Constitution and it strongly states the separation of church and state. And if the church is gonna come in here and be used to discriminate against segments of our community, that is imperative. Thank you.
Next is Mark W. Schronbeck?
Schronbeck, yeah.
Thank you, sir. From Floyd/Courthouse.
Yeah. Mark Schronbeck, Floyd Courthouse District. I came here tonight mostly to learn, so I didn't really have any prepared comments. I just wanted to respond a little bit to what I've heard and learned so far. One is, I don't see tax dollars as a matter of my money or your money. It's our money. We have a county of twenty thousand or so people and we use a necessary policing to ensuring that the arts are supported both for their cultural and spiritual value as well as their economic value. I just wanted to say, I've heard a number of folks speak eloquently to how vitally important the arts and the activities supported by the Junebug Center and the Jacksonville, excuse me, Floyd Center for the Arts. Turned my lines in the past, sorry about that. And it just really brought to my attention how vital they are for our children. So I have no objection to our money helping those activities as well as Plenty and some of the other excellent organizations and endeavors that I've heard cited tonight. Thank you. And thank you for your work with us.
Next is Megan Peterson.
Hi, I'm Megan Peterson. I live in Christiansburg, nine and five First Street. So I know you're probably like, why is this around me? Christiansburg's coming here? Well, that's because I am a couple different things, a business owner, a Christian. I work a couple, what, job and a half, I guess. You're listening because we have our own business. But anyway, I love Floyd. I actually moved here from Florida to like the New York Valley. And all the times I've come to Floyd have been for the art center. I've done a couple of classes there, some beeswax candles, things like that. I love those. And then also, my husband's And then also my husband's group, so I will talk about how much I spend on schoolhouse fabrics. I do need to purchase my own clothing. But anyway, so just, you know, just, I thought it would come and give like sort of the outside perspective from somebody who comes to Floyd a lot and, you know, would love to buy homestead beer one day. It's my dream. Towel, clay, and then chickens and all that. And I just like Floyd because of all the different culture and stuff you guys have here. But I figured I would kind of talk a little bit about some values that I have and then also some labels that I guess, I don't have to talk through my whole life story, but I can use some labels to kind of give you a little quick thing. And then just hopefully make my case, I guess, for some things I support. So I know I said some things earlier, you might have like maybe some assumptions about what I might say, but I'll add a couple more labels. So I'm also co-chair of our local DSA, which stands for Democrat Socialist of America. And so I've come to those because of my Christian background. Anyway, don't want to get too much about politics, but just wanted to go with that. But yeah, so basically some of the values that I have about how, you know, Romans thirteen talks about how government is God's servant for good. I do believe that, of course, what it's done best, right? Obviously, you all get a degree that there sometimes when government is not. But that's the goal, right? Government to be servant for good. And so when we talk about these things like, oh, the church morality and, you know, we talk about all track shows and kids and all this stuff, things that come to mind for me are the ways that like I've been hurt more by people in church than outside of church. I have multiple friends that have been sexually abused by pastors, you know. So we can talk a little bit about how no matter what section of society you're in, you might have people that hurt you despite by whatever labels they have or whatever they claim to be, good or bad, whatever. So I'll let you stay. I think that there is like some of what people said earlier about the separation of church and state, things like that, you know, there are things that I don't want my taxes to be spent on, like killing kids overseas or killing kids in our environment. You know, here we have big polluters in our community that I think hurt our children and stuff. But anyway, what I want to kind of address is like, there is separation of church and state. There are things that we all don't agree on in taxes. There are things that we do agree on in taxes. As somebody who's only come to your county a couple of times, I mean, maybe more than I want to admit by a lot of fabric, but somebody who comes to your county, I come here for like the arts and culture. I come here for those classes that I kept getting at my local art center. I come here for the people at the Junebug Center or at other art centers that I've met that have enriched my life, that have taught me a lot about myself and things that I didn't realize about myself or about in childhood. I've taught, yeah, just learned a lot of things for different groups and different people. And so I hope that one day, you know, if I live here, my family, our kids, we hope to have, because we have a center, like these art centers, these human centers that give us these opportunities for our children to even just wonder about art or whatever from just different perspectives. I think that growing up, me going to the public libraries, what kind of saving from getting these views that my parents had, they were very racist, they were very anti-Semitic. There was just different things that if I didn't have these sort of outside influences in my life, I would end up being a very negative person today. So I just want to kind of talk about how there are also some people here who are present in your past and there are some people here who are present in your future. So if you look around the room, there's a lot of people here who are pretty young. I mean, I'm not that young, I'm not thirty yet, but, you know. I hope to be, you know, very involved with the program. I hope to work with people in the future, maybe in my own town council. And so I think it's another like opportunity to work with young people here who have a vision for the future and would like to work with you guys on different plans and ideas for the future. So I was trying to tell you stuff, hope that, thank you.
Last is Alice. Is it, help me with your last name, if you might. Benny. All right, thank you.
So hello, everyone. Just a reminder that this month is Pride Month.
Name and district.
What?
Name and district.
Oh, Alice. And my district is Montgomery. So it is Pride Month, just a reminder. So I really think that this is a time to be really uplifting, that it's a TQ plus community and not discriminating against them. So I just want to start with that and also mention that I am here. I'm part of that community and I, I just think it's really important to do, use funds to support marginalized people of all types, especially people who have been experiencing most discrimination. And another point that I did want to address is that I think it's, it is a very valid point that we shouldn't be using our money for objectionable purposes like tasers and violence from weapons. So that's one thing that I would like to address because you all did mention that there will be a lot more money going to tasers to perpetrate violence against the people of the community, which I personally think is objectionable. And just to kind of alleviate something else, the, I don't know if you all know, but the pride originated as a riot from perpetrated by the police against the people. And instrumenting police with more weaponry to harm the people more is not in our interest. That's all I have.
This is the end of every line who is standing up. On the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Echols?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Turner?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And if I might, a note to the folks in the audience and you all. We did receive some letters on several of the topics related, emails related to the budget. And so those were included in your folder. So as you know, that's our normal practice of wanting to work with you there on Sunday. Thank you.